Welcome Lowell and friends of Lowell to the first of two forums for the candidates for Lowell School Committee. My name is Jim Campanini, the editor of The Sun. We'll be doing these forums, the first one starts in a few minutes, and this is in collaboration with Lowell Telecommunications and The Sun. We're very proud of that arrangement. And this, these forums this evening, we hopefully will give you some enlightenment into this distinguished panel behind me. Tonight's forum will last one hour. Will, each candidate will be asked questions, and each one of them will be, have one minute to answer the question. There will be time for rebuttal. Within, with about 10 minutes left in the program, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. With that, I am going to turn over this panel to our moderator, Chris Scott, who is The Sun's enterprise editor. Thank you for watching. Chris?
Thank you, Jim. Good evening to all the candidates, the challengers, and the incumbents. I'd like to introduce everybody. To my left is challenger Dan Shanahan, followed by another challenger Noel Kriegen, followed by an incumbent Jackie Doherty, a challenger Jerry Nutter, and another incumbent, Mr. Robert Hoey. So as my boss Jim Campanini mentioned, we're going to try to mix this up a little bit. If candidates have a burning desire to respond to what another candidate said, we're going to allow that to happen. The less you hear of me, and the more you hear of them, the better. So this is the first of two panels. We're going to try to ask each panel a series of questions that Jim and I discussed beforehand that we think are pretty high-profile and that all candidates should address. I can't guarantee that I'll hit every one of them, but we'll try to get to most of them as we can. So without further ado, we'll start, we'll just go down the, no particular order, okay? I'll start with Dan Shanahan. Dan, this question I'll give to you. According to state data for the 2016, 2017 school year, 67% of Lowell Public Schools students are minorities, and yet 90, and yet 97%, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, of the teaching staff and administration is white. This is one of the largest classroom ethnicity gaps in the entire state. Are minority students being disadvantaged?
I don't believe they are, because when you look at the quality of the teachers, hopefully hiring is based on merit, based on education, based on their, their training and experience. So as, as a school committee and as a district, I would hope that we are trying to get the best qualified teachers into the school regardless of what their ethnic background may be. Now, if there are challenges with language barriers, then hopefully, or certainly there should be resources available in the schools so that children who speak English as a second language aren't at a disadvantage to other students who do primarily speak English. So my answer would be, they're not at a disadvantage if we are hiring the, the best and most qualified teachers.
Thank you. Noel?
Sure. So I agree with much of what Dan said. I think if you have the most qualified teachers, they should be meeting and addressing the needs of our diverse student population. I would say one opportunity that I think we have, and maybe it's a partnership with UMass Lowell as they, there's talk that they may be expanding or reopening their education facility as a way maybe to tap into that career opportunity at the high school level and start working some of our students at a high school level into that opportunity and under, to better understand what the teaching profession or other education professions could offer them, and then hopefully encourage them to stay in Lowell and provide that service here to students like themselves if that's the case. But again, I think it's really important that we have the most qualified candidates, I mean candidates coming through for these jobs, absolutely.
Jackie Doherty?
Well, I'd like to say we do have a highly qualified teaching staff in Lowell, and I think it's something we're very proud of, especially their ability to work with our diverse students. But I would have to disagree that it's not a disadvantage that we don't have more leaders and teachers in front of our students who represent the backgrounds that they come from, because I think there's that role model aspect and that aspiring to. So we have been working very closely on this issue. In fact, I had a motion this term where we're looking at ways to diversify our staff, which Ms. Kriegen hit the nail right on the head. We have a program with our paras who are in our students, who are in our classrooms to be able to go through Middlesex Community College. We have a tuition reimbursement program, which is another wonderful benefit about working in the Lowell Public Schools. And we have, right now, just recently, UMass Lowell has added in a bachelor's in education program which they didn't have prior. And that was part of my whole motion to go and reach out to the chancellor, I mean, not just because of me obviously, but this whole movement to really build that pipeline, that we take our Lowell High graduates and show them a path to become our teachers of tomorrow, that we actually develop our own pipeline of diverse teaching staff for the future, that these students will know the most about the population having come up through the system themselves. But bottom line is always highly qualified teachers, definitely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jerry Nutter, one of the challengers.
I agree with Jackie. I think it is a little bit of a disadvantage, but I will say that this committee has been trying to expand their outreach. They have voted to, you know, ask the human resource director to go out and to try to recruit in different areas and take different trips and try to expand the coverage of where we're posting jobs, where we're holding job fairs, and so they, they are trying. They're not as successful as we probably would like, but I agree with Dan, as long as we're hiring the best teachers possible, then we should continue to do that while trying to expand the diversity.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. Well, diversity in the hiring is a very important part of everything that's happening for me with HR. I've tried to fix the HR office. I spent a lot of time, I focused on the HR. We hired 219 new teachers and paraprofessionals. The issue I have with it is, we have a HR department, and then they're told to go down and look in Louisiana for minority teachers. Our school is made up of 31, our high school is made up of 31% Hispanic, 29% Asian, 29% white. Why are we down in Louisiana looking for black people? I don't understand it. I think we should be looking at the University of Puerto Rico. I think we should be looking at maybe a city in, I'm trying to think of a city in California, but they have a large population of Southeast Asians.
Long Beach?
Long Beach, thank you. I think that's where you should be going to look for help. Where do we send people to look for help? Louisiana. We have 8% black in our city, most of them are from islands or Africa. I think if you're looking for those type of teachers, we should be over in their universities looking for them. So that's about it on that issue, but I thought we addressed diversity as much as we could on this school committee this year, and I know it's an issue that's going to continue to be worked on.
May I just? Yes, absolutely. I was going to ask if someone wanted to take another shot at that. Dan?
Yeah, and I didn't want people to infer from my answer that, that we should be okay with what the percentages are now. We're not happy with the status quo. And what I was saying was, we have, as Jackie said, very highly qualified students and teachers that are in there now, but hopefully efforts continue to bring in a better applicant pool of diverse teachers, and you would think that given what the student body comprises of, that it would be an attraction to all, all different backgrounds of teachers. So hopefully in the next, you know, five to 10 years, we continue to see that trend where there's more of a level playing ground.
I'd like to just follow up particularly to Jackie and to Bob on this, because you're both on the committee, and the three of you can take a shot at this as well. How successful have those recruiting trips been? I mean, I've discussed them with Salak Althawi, the superintendent. The impression I get is that they're not meeting with a lot of success, and, and the efforts have to continue. So maybe the tool you can expand upon that a little bit, and you guys can respond too. Jackie, why don't you go ahead with that?
So I actually have a motion on for this meeting that we have this week, asking for a report, because I don't really know what results we've seen. We had a number of administrative changes just in the last six months.
That's another question later on this evening.
Like 10 new principals and none of diverse background that I could see, you know, the ones that we met. And just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Hoey said, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to just specifically target certain schools and, and travel out and recruit at those schools. I think really that the rest of our efforts has to be in developing our internal pipeline. You know, we have the students here and getting them through Middlesex or through UMass Lowell and kind of homegrown, you know, having this homegrown effort. So at this point, we don't have a lot of results, at least I haven't seen that report yet.
But you have a motion to get that report.
Right, but we are, we put a little money aside that was specifically targeted towards recruiting, and I think that's where Mr. Hoey was talking about these specific schools that we went to, because in the past, there wasn't even that effort. But I really think a two-pronged approach is going to show the kind of results. But I think we all agree, bottom line, you want the highest quality teacher you can get in front of our students.
Bob, your side?
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing to it. If you look at numbers, and we were just looking at some with diversity, we have about 1,100, between 1,100 and 1,200 teachers, 72% of them are white female. Some people say, well, that makes sense, Bob, it's logical. Well, I don't know. I think diversity, we have to look at some white males, I've said that before. Why not hire white people too? We're not being looked at, you know, and to me, affirmative action happened to me 50 years ago. I was told you can't become a sergeant, okay? And I had to eat that. It was a tough thing to do. You walk away with your tail between your legs because you worked hard to become a sergeant. But we have to have quotas. Well, to me, the same thing's happening now. Like if my son wanted to be a cop, he has to go to war. I think it's all level, the playing field should be level, and hire the best people. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else on this issue, or are we good on diversity?
I would just say from a perspective of recruiting people to this area, in my professional career, it's, it's always difficult, I think, to recruit people from other areas of the country to move here.
Relocate.
So really, it's, it's, it's a hard place to relocate to. In my experiences, I've relocated people to the area and assimilate to. We have a high cost of living comparatively to other areas of the country, and we have a long winter, and we have all these other things that kind of compound. When you talk about recruiting somebody maybe from Louisiana, this doesn't maybe seem like the most attractive place if they're not maybe really engaged in Lowell specifically. So I think that's probably something that you really have to find the right candidate in one of those situations, but being able to develop and fill our own pipeline from, from our core of students, if that's possible, I think that would be a great thing. You have great understanding of the community and, and great understanding of what the challenges are and really how, how things work.
All right, so Chris, that's what?
Just like 10 seconds if I could. That issue, I, I know we heard it, a lot of people aren't going after education, especially minorities, they're going after the medical fields. I think what we've done, and I'm pretty sure it was Jackie, we tried to get the paras, we're trying to get them to turn into teachers, and I think that's probably the best thing we did this year as far as addressing diversity.
All right, so the discussion that we just had on this issue is what, how I'd like this evening to go down, okay? It's just a question, then the viewers can hear more about where all you guys are coming from. Now, this next question I was going to ask later on this evening, but it seems appropriate to ask it now. Jackie mentioned, what, 10 new principals? Are you including the high school principal there in that number?
That was a round number.
That was a round number, okay.
But I'm thinking it's, it seems like quite a bit.
Okay, there's, there are those, okay? There's a special education director at the high school, there's the athletic director, there's the transportation director. There have been a number of high-profile departures from the Lowell School Department in the last, say, six months. Is this the normal churn of a big-city school department, or is it endemic of another issue maybe touching on the way the school department is being run? Nicole, this is, I'm sorry, Noel, this is yours.
Thank you.
Yeah?
So it's, it's really hard, being an outsider right now at this point, to assess what's going on at a very granular, granular level like I would like to assess. I think it's, it's symptomatic of something, but it's, sometimes it's just change in leadership, and when leadership changes, people either buy into that leadership or they may not, and then it causes some people to say, you know what, I'm going to go in a different direction. And then it allows that new leader then to select the people that he or she feels are really going to be effective in that role. So I don't know if it's uncommon as somebody new comes into a role, a leader role. I mean, I think some of these were normal retirements as well. Some of the positions like the head of, head of schools, that was a normal retirement, and I believe a couple other ones were...
Just call it the principal.
The principal. Sure, if you will, I will. So I think it really depends on the circumstance, but I also think it's, it's a fairly normal situation to see transition and changes in a lot of positions as leadership changes, and expectations may change and be different.
Okay.
I would agree that there's a certain amount of change that happens with a change in leadership, but I can say in my 15 years of paying attention to the Lowell Public Schools, I don't recall a time where I've seen this much change at that level. You've got our principal, our, our school leaders are very important people in terms of our ability to continue to make progress. I mean, it really, but this falls within the reign of the superintendent's responsibility. You know, it's his area. As a school committee person, our role is really, he reports to us and as a board, not as a single person. So I, for me personally, I'm very much interested in unpacking what are some of the reasons and getting a deeper dive into that, which I don't have that information right now. We have an evaluation process which will, you know, enable, and actually, we have a personnel subcommittee meeting happening Wednesday night, based on a motion that I had, sorry, but I do have a lot of motions, looking at the hiring practices and our policies in terms of are they being followed. Now, the policy's clear because, you know, things change. I mean, even just to look at the drug screen issue, that's one issue we'll be discussing. You know, as we all know, marijuana is now, you know, has a different status in the state of Massachusetts, and how do we implement that? How does our policy evolve, and how does that impact our hiring decisions? So I think there's a lot more that has to be discovered about this, and I would agree that some of it, we have a change in leadership, somebody who came in from outside the district, but I don't think that totally explains the high numbers that we're seeing, and I'm looking for more information on that issue in particular. Thank you.
I bet you have something to say about that, Jerry.
Yeah, well, we, we lost eight principals in, in total, along with the transportation slash head of parent information center. I think some of it was retirement, normal retirement. I mean, Brian Martin's case, that's, you know, quite clear, but we lost, you know, we lost a guy...
That wasn't the case with everybody.
No, like the principal Jason DeCarlo up at the Merklin School.
We lost him.
You know, there's a good, highly regarded principal, why did he leave? I mean, there is some feeling that, you know, this superintendent, either you do it his way or you're not part of the team. I think there's, there's a little bit of, you know, you get a new guy in there, he changes things, but there doesn't seem to be a very cohesive unit in there right now. I think there's a lot of people who, who say he walks in and he doesn't communicate with people, and I think there's a lot of people who feel that he doesn't want Lowell people. If you look at, you know, some of his key hires, they weren't from Lowell, and he, you know, that seems to be the, the case with some people who don't, don't think that he wants anyone who has a long history in the city. So I think part of it is his, I think part of it is a change. I mean, we saw when Kevin Murphy took over, a change in City Hall. You expect some of that, but this to me seems like a very high number, and I do think there is some concern with the, the school department, that it's not a very good leadership directive at the top. I was very disappointed in his role in the high school situation. I didn't think he took leadership role in that at all, so.
That's coming.
I know.
Mr. Hoey?
Well, Jason DeCarlo, I begged him to stay, but he told me he didn't like the way this superintendent was being treated, so that's what he said to me. But I look at something else. I sit with all these, my colleagues, and I seen Mr. Gignac talk about the Robinson School this year. I heard him talk about the Greenout School, and the mayor joined hands with him and kind of went after schools that were underperforming, and that's what we told our superintendent. So he's replaced the Greenout School leadership, he's replaced the Robinson, he's replaced the McAuliffe, all underperforming schools except the McAuliffe. They took her out of there to go downtown because she has a new job, and she's going after keeping principals accountable. We also changed the Cardinal O'Connor School leadership, the Sullivan School leadership, and I think this superintendent's showing great leadership. He's coming in after a time when we had a superintendent, Jean Franco, that I worked with 20 years ago, and I think she kind of let her CFO, Jay Lang, take over, take, in charge of the place, and he did. And he, he did a great job, but we lost Jay Lang. We've got to live without Jay Lang. And I think this superintendent's not from Lowell, and that's been his difficulty. Some people don't get along with the guy for whatever reasons, but so far, I think he's doing a great job. We're going after the schools that need the help. So thank you.
Dan Shanahan?
As a challenger and not being embedded in the day-to-day operations, you know, I don't know if it's coincidental, I don't know if there's an anomaly spike that we've seen. It just so happens that the superintendent is making decisions to go in a new direction for leadership on top of planned retirements, but I guess we'll have to see what happens. We'll have to see what the results are, because if part of the motivation is to improve performance at certain schools, and there had to be leadership changes at those schools, then I would be in support of that, and we'll see how it turns out. I, I happen to be excited about the changes that were made at the Robinson School, for example, because that's my neighborhood, and I have relatives that go there and have told me how disruptive it can be, so I know they've put some, some strong personalities in there, and I'm optimistic that they're gonna, they're gonna turn, you know, the Robinson around and, and catch other schools up too with, you know, the other neighborhoods, so.
Are we all good on hiring?
I just, I think what Bob said is, and what Dan said is an important point, which is that some people, it was addition by subtraction. So we got, you know, we got rid of people, but for the purpose of improving our schools. So I think that's, that's an important component of that. It's not just a mass exodus, everyone's just got to get out. It was more, you know, that some of those decisions were proactive by the school department.
I think that's true as well. We don't want somebody in the role who's not doing the work that needs to be done, whether that's a teacher in a classroom or a principal at the head of the school. I guess my concern and one of the areas I want to learn more about is many of these moves were made with people who had three-year contracts, that their contracts were signed, you know, last year, for instance. So you'll find that the, it's really not a mass exodus for some of these players, they're still in the system, still making their salaries in, in different roles.
In different roles.
Somebody like Jason DeCarlo left the district, or somebody like our transportation director slash family coordinator left the district. But some, and of course, we had the retiree like with the house, the high school principal. But, but some of the other situations were not that clear-cut, and that's where I think I'm, I'm, I want to learn more about it. So I'm not saying, I wouldn't be as strong as Mr. Nutter on my left, that in, in terms of assessing, you know, where we are in terms of the leadership with the superintendent, we haven't got all the information yet, but these are areas that I am concerned about that have to do with, you know, all the moving parts.
Okay, we'll get to the high school soon, and we'll get to the budget in a few minutes. Jackie, this next question goes to you since we all talked about the superintendent. We should ask this question. Now, he recently got a new contract for the incumbents. Tell us how you voted on the contract and why, and then the challengers can answer the question, would you have voted to give the superintendent a new contract were you a member of the school committee? So Jackie, why don't you start with that question?
In terms of the superintendent contract, I did not vote for the contract, and there were a number of reasons. From, right from the get-go, I didn't want a contract that expanded a whole new committee. You know, it turns out this committee that I'm currently on and the next committee will be serving under that same contract. Effectively was four years. It took a year to finally get it, you know, going, but that's what it ended up being. Secondly, I was not in favor of having annual increases built in without evaluation, not tied to evaluation of performance. I mean, I work in corporate America, and my evaluation is based on my performance, and I wanted that element in there, and it wasn't. And the third reason, which I'm not going to talk to specific moments because I off the top of my head can't remember them, but there was quite a few areas, at least two or three, and some of them, we were able to get the language out, and Mr. Shanahan, you're a lawyer, so you probably would have a better understanding of it. I can read, I'm not a lawyer, but there was some language in the contract that we were able to get removed, you know, before it came to a final vote, but still not enough that I felt represented our interests enough, that, you know, a, a contract that is basically just a protection for an employee is not a balanced contract in my mind. I'm out here protecting the interests of the Lowell taxpayer and our children. And so I, so for those three basic reasons, I did not support the contract.
And before we go to Mr. Nutter, it should be noted that the superintendent said on the Sun's cable television show and in the newspaper that he didn't even want a contract, and he didn't care if he got one or not. So Jerry, why don't you pick up now?
I would not vote to give him a contract, a lot of the same reasons that Jackie said. I don't think you automatically give someone a 2.5% raise that's not tied to an evaluation. I work in the private sector, we have yearly reviews. I wish I could automatically get a 2.5% increase, it just doesn't work that way. He did not, when he came here, the first school committee that he worked with negotiated for three or four sessions, trying to convince him to have a contract, but he did not want one. He agreed to the memorandum of understanding, and so there was no reason in my mind that he needed a term-defined contract, so. And I don't think, I think I can show different times where, you know, someone makes a motion, the motion gets passed, and he hasn't responded to it, and sometimes three or four months. That's not anything that would make me say, oh yeah, let's give him a contract. No, I would not have supported a contract.
You're the man on the spot because you were the person who filed a motion for the contract...
That's okay, yes. Well, without a doubt, I, I picked the mayor to go do his negotiations. I think when you have a school system that's 16, approaching 16,000 students, 3,100 employees, I think a superintendent without a contract is as useless as a, a bull with, I can't say that word on TV, but I think he needed teeth. I think he needed teeth. I know it's live. And my, my thinking...
We appreciate you.
I think, I think he has a contract, and it was the best thing we did for the school system. I think he's in charge now. When you have a memorandum of understanding, you're not in charge, you can, they can get rid of you at any time. It was easy, I would have had an easier time firing the superintendent than I did getting him a contract. People don't have many good things to say about him there. There's a few people on this panel that never have something to say to him about, maybe we can help you this way, or maybe we can help you that way, or call his staff, ask him a question. No, it's all negativity with him. Why, I don't know, but I think it all still falls off of us losing Jay Lang. I really do, and we have to get over it, and...
So in other words, it's because he's not a Lowellian?
Yeah, he's a blow-in. He's a blow-in, he's not related to everybody, and he's making decisions that a lot of people aren't happy with, and, you know, it's not easy to be him right now, but I think if we give him a chance, we can always get rid of him in a couple of years, and I thought my rights were violated actually when we were negotiating his contract, one of four things that I can do. Inside that, you know, the executive sessions that you go in, I wish people could be inside those things, because you, you hear people that are playing with the content of his contract, that's not up to the city solicitor. I thought my rights as a school committee person, I got my rights violated, I think...
Or specifically, how were your rights violated?
Well, I think I should be, been able to offer the superintendent what I want to offer him. Now, they were trying to do a, a contract for Kevin Murphy at the same time, and ironically, our superintendent of schools is about $600 or $700 less than Kevin Murphy as a city manager. So this is really about pensions if we start looking at it, but that's another issue. I just think that what I did pushed Mayor Kennedy to put a contract on this superintendent, I think it's going to help save the school system.
Mr. Shanahan?
Well, to be competitive with other districts, you, you got to see what other districts are doing. So I think when it came to, to our superintendent, if I was a part of the process, I would have looked to see what other districts were doing regarding whether they had contracts in place or not. So certainly to attract a, a top-quality superintendent here, you'd want to be at the very least comparable as far as job security with other districts. From what I've heard though, is that there was a memorandum of understanding in place. It didn't appear that there was any lack of security for his position at, at the time. It almost seemed like it was a unilateral push to, to have a contract, and went through. As far as the con... As far as the contract itself, again, I wasn't a part of the bargaining process, so what early drafts there were, what was knocked out. I mean, there are terms in there now that I'm not comfortable with, the indemnity clause. I certainly have an issue with defense costs if he leaves early, whether it's for cause from the department's side, and as well as the automatic increase of salary. You know, where's the incentive as far as performance? So, again, certainly, there are clauses within that contract that I don't agree with, but I don't know what was in there to begin with and what may have been omitted to get to the point we were at.
It sounds like you would not have voted to give the superintendent a contract. Am I reading too much?
Not under these circumstances, I would not have.
Thank you. Noel.
So, again, I think we're in a similar situation, I guess, to say whether or not we would, just not having been privy to the process. I think there are some things that, on my investigation, that I did not agree with. I think it's very important to have some stability at that level, and I think a contract does ensure that, that consistency, that commitment. I think having performance-based metrics that are defining what any salary increases are critically important. I think that's absolutely true in my own professional experience, and I don't know why it wouldn't be true in this. I think the biggest flaw in the process, and I've spoken to some other folks about this, is that contract was negotiated solely between the superintendent and Mayor Kennedy. And I think that didn't allow for enough people to be involved in the discussion. I don't really know why that decision was made. I think it was probably just that it was such a long process, and that was the one way to progress it. But I think what it presented with was a contract that maybe doesn't 100% always have the best interest of the city in mind. So, that would be my concern. I think just a lot of it is really two people negotiating it.
I know the incumbent would want to respond. Jackie?
Well, you guys are great. I agree completely. And if you look around the state, most superintendents do have a contract. And I would support a contract that I felt was fair and protecting our interests as well as the superintendent's. I'd like to go back to something that my colleague, Mr. Hoyey, said. You can tell if I is, be smiling. He knows where I'm going. One of the issues that happened was, I think the mayor, I think the mayor taking such a strong lead slowed us down, actually, because we would have discussions, and we want this and that, and then it would come back, it was the same, you know, and time had gone by. I became very strident about wanting the city solicitor there because I'm not a lawyer, as I mentioned. And I felt that we needed somebody representing, looking at the legal language. And my understanding of her role was she was our general counsel. She was our advisor, that not to content in terms of saying, I don't think you should give him 2%, but content in terms of, is this language clear in terms of, does it protect our interests? And what does it mean? What is just cause? What is, you know, whatever? And the superintendent had his lawyer looking at the language. So, I felt that we were at a disadvantage of being laypeople deciding a legal contract. I wasn't aware that Mr. Hoyey felt it was an infraction of his rights, but I felt it was doing my due diligence to say. And we did have meetings where the city solicitor was there, but it was not throughout the process.
Well, she definitely wanted the city solicitor there, and she was backing the city solicitor on everything. But when it came to other issues, she didn't want the city solicitor there, but that's okay. But Dan, it took a year for the mayor to solve this contract. The one thing I did look at is this superintendent voluntarily gave up his sick time. You know, when Jay Lang left Lowell, he took two $50,000 checks, all right? One for sick time, one for vacation time. Nothing said about that. But this new superintendent already volunteered his sick time. I think we give him 45 days vacation time. That's the maximum amount he can save. And the one thing that I thought he did, we have, I think we got him as a bargain. Let me say that. Anytime you can get a guy that's running a system this big that I think is going to do good things for about a buck 90, I think, is his total, I think it's a good price. Because real good superintendents, running something this big, they end up getting about $2, $2.15. I've done my research. He's paid pretty cheap. I think the mayor done a fine job. And we're going to see.
Jerry, you want to take one last crack at this?
Well, as much as I disagree with this contract, it could have been worse. The initial draft that was given out at a school committee meeting, and then they put it on hold and reworked it.
It was put on hold several times.
Yes. But one of the times called for language that if a parent or if a business owner had a complaint, had a problem, had a question about something that was happening in the school, the superintendent wanted you to call him, and he would get back to you with the answer. And to me, that's not how it's supposed to work. One of the few things that school committees do is hire a superintendent. The superintendent is supposed to work for them. I think this superintendent doesn't really respect the role of the school committee. And in an interview with the Sun, in talking about hiring, one of the quotes that really irritated me was, he said that he doesn't allow, if you look at his track record, he doesn't allow school committees to interfere with his work. And the beauty of him is he can retire anytime he wants. Well, to me, that's very disrespectful to the people who you work for. And ever since then, I really have not been impressed with the superintendent.
Let's move on to the budget, okay? Jerry, you mentioned earlier, referring to the superintendent's contract, about a 2.5% raise. The teachers recently got a new contract with raises that are higher than some of the other local communities. And the school department just hired Rebecca Duda to run the parent information center at a salary higher than what John Dakota did for doing that job, plus the job of transportation director. So, it's kind of a long-winded way to get around to the budget issue in Lowell. The superintendent recently talked about a $600,000 budget deficit. Just how bad are the finances? Are the finances of concern to you? And if you had to cut the budget in the coming months or weeks, where would you look and where would you take out the budget knife?
Well, first of all, the budget should never have been one presented in the fashion it was, and it should never have been passed in the fashion it was. There was no need to have a $600,000 deficit. The Senate at the time hadn't voted. They made a proposal to include an additional $600,000, but it wasn't passed. In the past, I've seen school committees put a position in at a dollar and vote to put the funding in a suspense account until it has been passed. They didn't do that. They went ahead and passed, causing us to have a $600,000 deficit. We would have had that in free cash at the end of the fiscal year, had the superintendent not taken health care costs that could have gone, been charged to grants, and instead charged them to the health care line. If you look at the end-of-year budget report in June, the health care budget had about $17,000 or $73,000. I forget the exact amount. But then, all of a sudden, at the August meeting, it was $600,000 in the hole because of creative financing. So, one of the things I'm going to push for is more transparency. The school department is charged, as part of their chargebacks, for the auditing service. The city charges as part of it for the auditing. Yet, the reports that the school committee get in their packets aren't even from the MUNIS system, and they should be.
The computer system.
The computer system, that's the major accounting system for the city of Lowell.
So, is the school department in a budget crisis or not? Or is this manufactured?
It doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be. I think this particular school committee has been very generous when it comes to rewarding their employees. The teachers under them received two contracts totaling 13% salary increases. The superintendent gets a salary increase of 10% over the term of his contract. One of the assistant superintendents ended up with a 17% contract. You mentioned Rebecca Duda. That position, one person doing two jobs, was budgeted at $96,000. It has now been broken into two jobs that, one just got filled at $65,000. That's the transportation that just got filled this week. And Rebecca Duda's position is $105,000. So, you're paying $170,000 in salary, plus when you add a body, you add another $10,000 in benefits. So, a position that paid 96 is now paying 180.
Well, you've got the bill.
Oh.
Mr. Hoyey.
I have my money on me, Jerry. It was convenient. I'm confused on what question you're asking. Is it about the teachers?
No, the teachers, that was my segue into the question.
Okay, okay.
Do you believe that the school department is in some type of budget distress? And if so, and if you remain on the committee and you're forced to cut the budget, or take a look at the budget, where would you cut?
Well, where would I cut personally? I think we could maybe find about a half a million just in curriculum alone, and we haven't hit that yet. We've got people all over the place in curriculum. We've got a curriculum leader for 150. We've got another curriculum leader down at the high school. We've got department heads down at the high school. These are all people making real big money. There's no doubt we're top-heavy, if we had a cut. But I think the claim to fame to this superintendent is going to be what they call indirect cost, AKA, also known as Maintenance of Effort Agreement, which was written a decade ago by Jay Lang. This superintendent brought that up to me at a facility subcommittee. I opened my big mouth, and the motion maker come out with the best motion that's ever going to happen to the city of Lowell. It's an issue being addressed.
She can respond to that.
Well, she can respond to anything. We're ready to look at that money, and this superintendent wants a lawyer because our money, our CFO guy, isn't getting any respect from the city side. It's pretty hard to replace Jay Lang, and that's what this guy had to do. But I think because of us, the school committee, we're going to hit that Maintenance of Effort Agreement, and I think we're going to find enough money to get through that budget crunch. That's what I believe.
I just want to follow up on one thing you said. You said the school department is top-heavy.
Yes, sir.
Yet, didn't you want to make another deputy superintendent out of the, in the HR department?
Yes, I did.
Could you explain that?
Well, I was, when I ran, two years ago, I ran on teachers and powers. I remember Mr. Campanini asking me what I thought a teacher was worth, and I said $104,000. I think you all remember that. I have no problem saying that to people. Most people tell me teachers are underpaid for the job that they're doing. I'm here to do my job, and I think I've done it. I've done it. But when you said.
But what about the HR department?
Hire the HR department. Well, if you look at what that HR department has done since I've been here, they're not getting credit for it because, to me, certain people don't want the HR director there. But I was here on the, almost like the Revenge of Dr. Helen Flanagan when I was here 20 years ago. There's nothing more important than an HR office inside a school department. You have to fill, you know, you have to find teachers. It's not like an HR department in a prison where I worked. This is different. And they hired 219 people over the summer, didn't get an ounce of credit for it. Their credit, sorry?
Okay. I'm just going to follow up on one question on that. Following the, your motion, the superintendent put the business manager in charge of HR.
They sure did. And now, if you look at that office, Mr. Frisch, the CFO, we just lost someone under him that used to be the HR person. To me, the HR director and her staff have been working in a hostile environment for about a year now, really hostile. They don't want to give him any credit, for whatever reason. Might be because of someone's name. I don't know. All I'm looking at is their performance. And if anybody goes in and looks at their performance this year, how they didn't get an attaboy is beyond me. And I made my, I made sure LTC's two-minute speech that I gave, which will be coming out shortly, I gave them that attaboy they deserved.
Dan Shanahan.
I don't know if it's good or bad to follow Jerry on this subject matter. I'm not going to pretend.
Jerry or Bob?
Well, Jerry, as far as the details, I mean, he should be a bean coner, and if I pretend to talk in that detail, the audience will see right through me. I'll try to speak in general terms, though. Again, you know, it's difficult when the state hasn't actually voted on a budget, and they have projected budgets, and you're optimistic that that's what's going to be, and that's where the school department sets its budget. Perhaps, you know, you look back four or five years, you look at the history of where the budgets actually, what was voted on, you know, see where the trend is there, and then try to set your budget closer to what, you know, you've seen over a four- or five-year span, not what, you know, the legislature or the state house thinks the upcoming year is going to be. Again, I think you'd have to look at positions, you know, whether it's, you know, whether it's top-heavy. Again, look at the titles, look at duties and responsibilities, see where those responsibilities are delegated to, and to see whether or not we have our best value at that administrative level and whether cuts could be made there versus in the classroom.
Okay. May I have to do the closing statements? Oh, my goodness.
It's already time.
Well, just letting Nicole take her crack at the.
Noel.
Noel, at the budget.
I should wear my sticker.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's happened my whole life. So, I think, I think a lot of it's been covered. I think really ultimately, at the end of the day, whenever you're doing budget, you really have to be disciplined about looking at efficiency. It's always easy to go back and say, last year, we did all of these things, and it cost this. Understanding the prioritization of all those things, obviously, headcount is a critically important one that you want to protect, but you also have to look at, is this still meeting the needs of our school system, our school district, and understand those individual roles and the value that they bring. So, I think it's really just understanding that. I think there was also costs that continually increase on us. And the Maintenance of Effort, having some sort of transparency with the Maintenance of Effort Agreement is something that really is deserved to the school department at this point, because that's a lot of money that comes out of the budget, and it just seems like it's just this, from the explanation that's been given to me, this kind of amorphous mass of money that we send back to the city or that the city just withholds. So, being able to really understand where that money is going would be really helpful, and then also just planning forward. But I also think, from the perspective of looking at the budget and not just spending money, but also ways of saving money, and I think the superintendent's done a good job with that with regard to the day school. And that's obviously been supported by the current school committee, but I think that's showing great progress. They anticipated 15. They have 26 students there.
All right. Thank you. Forty-five minutes has flown by, so now we're going to move to our closing statements. We'll start at the opposite end of the panel. Mr. Hoyey, you have one minute.
Okay. Thank you, everybody here, for having us here. This is a freebie. It's good for us. I do know one thing. I was on your school committee twice. I had a 20-year gap. I remember Judge Sappa Savas, I gave him a three-year contract on my way out before I went to run for city council, because I went in not liking him, but then I brought a motion to give him a contract because he was the hardest-working man I ever met. You only got four powers as a school committee person: hire and fire the superintendent, budgets, negotiations, and write some policy. I wrote one time, "Changing the age requirements of children entering school." So, you have limited powers, but some of us try to micromanage these superintendents, and it's having an effect on the system. I hope that you consider me again when you go to the polls on November 7th with one of your six votes. Thank you very much for watching LTC tonight.
Thanks, Bob Hoyey. Jerry Nutter, one of the challengers.
Thank you. I respectfully ask for one of your votes on November 7th. You know, a friend of mine used to say, it amazed him how, when people got elected to the school committee, they became Horace Mann. I'm no Horace Mann. I'm not an educational expert. We hire experts to give us the advice on how to improve our educational system. But I'm someone who likes to dig and look at information, look at fiscal information, and ask questions. And that's what I'll do in my role on the school committee. I will ask questions. I will work on the Maintenance of Effort. I will also work to get more parents involved. You know, school-site councils can play a major role in the city, and we've seen a lot of parent involvement over the high school issue, which we never got to this time. But it's important to stay involved, no matter where the high school goes. We get parents involved, we need to keep them involved, and that's what I'll work to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry Nutter. Incumbent Jackie Doherty.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jackie Doherty. I'm asking for your vote for Lowell School Committee. I believe I've earned that vote in the last 15 years. I've devoted a good bit of my time for advocating for a better educational system for our students. I do my homework, learn about the issues, and vote my conscience every time, taking stands, even when it's uncomfortable, for what I believe will be best for our children and the educational needs of our city. For many reasons, I support keeping Lowell High downtown, but that's one issue. There are many other critical issues I've worked to improve, such as high-quality instruction,
effective school leadership, parent involvement, staff diversity, adequate resources, safety, and use of limited funds. My experiences and proven commitment make me uniquely qualified to do this important work for our children and our community, but I can't do it without your vote. I'm Jackie Doherty, and I respectfully request your vote on November 7th.
Thank you, Jackie Doherty. Noel Kriegen, I'm so sorry, I got that wrong twice. Noel Kriegen, a challenger for Lowell School Committee.
Where am I looking here? So, I'm Noel Kriegen. I am a new challenger and candidate for the Lowell School Committee, and I would also respectfully ask for one of your six votes on November 7th. I'm running really because I think we need some representation of school-age, of parents who have school-age children on the school committee. I think that we've had some people that have been involved for a long time, and they've contributed great things, but I think having some new folks involved would be very beneficial to the city and moving us forward. I would respectfully, again, ask for your vote. If you'd like to talk more about this, I am holding a fundraiser on Thursday at Mount Pleasant from 6:00 to 9:00, and I would welcome the opportunity to talk to you some more. Thanks.
Thank you, Noel Kriegen. Dan Shanahan, one more challenger.
And I'm asked, why? Why am I doing this? Why am I running for Lowell School Committee? And I've coached youth sports for a number of years. I've met a lot of great kids and families through football, basketball, lacrosse. You know, and I want to see those kids succeed. I have always believed that strong, I'll be directly through the camera this time, that strong, a strong schools build a strong community, and I want to be a part of the committee